So there's not to be there. Uh Molly at well, Molly at seven three two.
Okay.
Mary is supposed to.
All right. It says.
Yeah, it's out of track me.
Hey, Mary, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Awesome.
She's in.
We got.
Yeah, Molly's in, yeah.
We got a quorum, so we should be fine. But we've done with that every time we've got to follow the rule. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, so. Yeah, yep.
She's right. John. Okay. City council meeting for April eleventh, twenty twenty-three is now ending. So we will start by doing the legislative meeting. Those that can stand, possibly ready, here on your headgear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will start with the council members. Lee Cho Lander, absent. Kim Helgerson.
Yeah.
Mary Bailey, absent, although she has stated she would be a little bit late. Molly Ryan.
Here.
And she's on her way to Madison, Wisconsin. Mayor Henke is here. City Administrator Mark Paulson.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Rags here. City Engineer Jerry Colander has a special deal. As of three o'clock this afternoon, he became another daddy, a little girl named Cheyenne Rose. There is a picture of him up there, so. Congratulations, Gary. They also have City Administrator Molly here. We have Officer Brian Hope Meyer. Public Works Deputy Eric. And from EDA, we have Cora. How are you, Cora?
Good.
Been a while since we seen you. Okay, and we probably order down citizens' comments. We've got, go ahead, state your name and speak loudly if you will, please.
I'm going to be any Jensen. I'm just, I'm here for the for the council of the new decided Kenyon would be a lot of people in Kenyon would be a lot of chickens. I know I'm at the end of the meeting tonight. I have a little one-year-old that's not gonna let me stay all night. So I just, I had printed off some ordinances from the nearby cities. That that's what they wanted from me. And then I have written down how much space per bird would need, run space. So that's what he had asked from me. If I just have, I could just leave it here or um, for our consideration.
Just set them up here and we can pass them out at the end.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, everyone. Does know me? I'm Todd Gresson, county official for just three years. Um, just a brief update at the county where already starting our preliminary budget for twenty twenty-four. I'm just into the spring in the year, but something got to keep working on early. The founder did another face study to uh uh, in our you know, we are short. Well, one, two staff right now. They're looking for any help soon. I just talked with Mayor Henke earlier on. I am still pushing for us to get some market dollars left and I still want to get some radios for our services and give you counting kind of fighting a little bit of a battle, but you know, not letting that die yet. Still want to get, get some help to get started to get caught up again. So do you have anything for me you'd like to say there for the meeting? It needs to be addressed.
Yeah, we had a little discussion on cameras.
Okay.
Um, and you you stayed to me there possibility having to hire a individual to maintain, monitor them.
Well, part of it is if we have enough staff to do that, because it does take additional hours and and man hours to handle that. So um, I think it was like a hundred twenty-five thousand, so it wasn't that terribly expensive, but it is, as we looked at and researched, and we are moving forward on that. When the actual date is, if you don't
That would be a full-time position then for somebody or just, okay?
There, you know, we're in the process of hiring staff and you want to deal with really staff right now. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anybody else have some citizens' comments? If not, we will continue on with adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to be made to the agenda?
Um, no.
I'll make a motion then to to approve the the agenda for tonight with no changes.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, Molly, the motion is made and accepted to adopt the agenda as is. We need to go by each one reporting. Uh, Kim Helgerson.
Aye.
Uh, Molly Ryan.
Aye.
Doug Henke, aye. So it passes as is. Okay, the next one on the agenda on the list is the consent agenda, approval of minutes and appointments, and also financial. We can do that all in one uh motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We will second that. Any discussion on? Not, we will vote on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes and appointments and financial. Again, Kim Helgerson.
Aye.
Mary Ba- or Molly Ryan.
Aye.
Doug Henke, aye. So it passes. Okay, the next on the list is presentations, public hearing, recognition, qualifications. And Cora, I believe you are up on that.
So about a month ago, Mark and I did, we were Neil and Paul. Um, Paul is a gentleman that is actually interested in relocating his business to um, he has merchandise improvements with stores like Walmart, Arby's. He was an also have a transportation. They won't say it's great, but contract with FedEx, so they, because of his prior work experience with them, they have offered to help me in the development plan or the and because that because they will still be doing the transportation of their goods from here. And so that's a big thing in um what I've been working on and just communicating back and forth, making sure he's getting the information he needs from us and then that we have what we need because we would need to set up the district and and all that for him um in the area. So that is with the business part. Um, another thing that's great for the community. Um, and Molly is actually going to be based on the video that will happen um for this, but Tita hosts a regional development tour. And so Tita um gets a bus and basically end of August, different investors throughout cities, Rochester area, um, all over Minnesota can ride on the bus. They will come through Kenyon, Pine Island, Cannon Falls this year. Uh, prior years, it's been, there's some road out, good view. Uh, there's videos via YouTube that I can share with. Not exactly how Molly's will go by any means, but it's just, it's something that we can then use on the city end to market the community and get people interested and show what we're good at. Anyways, and so we'll, it's not any work on the city end. This work I'd have to do is putting together a, like a digital package of marketing material, which has been just updating some of the numbers because there was stuff that had been established prior to me starting here. Um, and then sharing that with the city teams and then they can put it all together because of our information plus the other communities that are participating this year. So that will happen end of summer. Because of that improvement program, we have five full applications in, and I say full as in they've got some idea or an estimate of what the work is actually going to cost, not as a shot in the dark of who's thinking like this. Um, they've actually contacted contractors. Um, so working through that and seeing how other communities run similar programs and how it can be sustainable because currently it's just a, we'll see my budget for it and then we'll see. Then we are limited on how many we can help within a year. Cause twenty thousand for um whole program itself is not very much. It's four thousand max for business. Uh, and just working on that because four thousand for business doesn't go very far, not with the cost of those labor these days. So that's something that I've been kind of working to update and get a structure for and um, that'll be more discussion at the meeting. Uh, and then working on finding for a paint account grant for depot park, so we can do some cosmetic um, exterior, interior updates and then any other funds that the city or EDA has could actually put. This grant was just for paint. So unfortunately, it could have been a better grant, but it reduces the cost of um, cities or EDA and so that if we needed to do like ADA compliance and stuff like that, other funds can go for it. That's what I have for you.
I'm working a bit busy.
Interview.
Right, right, see, and they're basically fruit on the vine and time to come here. Thank you. Okay, next on the list is engineering and uh since Derek is busy for this evening, uh Mark, you will go in for him, please.
Um, so there's a memo in your packet from Derek that outlines what happened. Um, Wayne, I don't know if you want to talk about this. You have an update on it? Um.
So on the afternoon, I was notified that we had a forced main break in the Detchoum Highway sixty, just east of the school plant. And so per permitting, I have to notify the officers and they notify oh PCA, the DNR, then dot. Uh, so we're working, I got contractors lined up. We got it fixed right away Monday. So I just got the lab results in yesterday and I sent them, sent them off to PCA. So they're waiting for a review on that. They'll have like a peer review. Um, and they'll get back to us with a formal letter on what's to become. So that's kind of helping up the area. Uh, this could be, I talked to him again today. It could be thirty to sixty days before this is all settled off. Everything's up and running again. Questions?
It'll take thirty to sixty days before we know if there's going to be a fine at all?
Yeah, we'll review all the data.
Okay.
Um. This recording filled out today. This will get sent in with my DMR. So that's my April reporting every month I have to do. So that um that's got to be in by the twenty-first, so that should be uh, May twenty-first, this has got to get sent down.
Okay.
And then they'll review on everything on that. They have their own little peer review with them, they're deciding. It's nothing that you took, it's a broken pipe, just we have a lot of eye on eye right now. You can't even if you weren't even give you a, a shot from the hip to roughly this much and rough it down.
Wayne, I appreciate you calling me that Sunday. You had it all together. You said you had equipment lined up and everything, so. I appreciate that fact and I think you should have pat on the shoulder for getting it arranged on the weekend, um calling emergency cases in, did what you're supposed to do. I appreciate what you've done.
Yep.
You're right.
Yep, did a good job. Thanks, Wayne.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Item B is Pearl Creek Sanitary Sewer.
Okay. Um, there, this is just uh next two items are both just basic updates. Um. So basically, they're in the process of the um they're in the process of finalizing plans for the project and planning to bring final plans and specs for the May meeting for approval. Um, we're also, Derek's also been working with the city attorney on getting draft easement agreements. Um, so that's, that's about all. That's where we're at right now. So plans and specs should be ready for the May meeting for approvals. So Derek will be back then. That's all we have for that.
Then we can go on to item C, which is twenty twenty-three street improvement summary. Again, Mark, you have the
Same with this. Um, Derek's in the process of finalizing plans and specs. And he's planning on bringing those to the council in May, the May council meeting. No other action at this time for that either.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Okay.
I will start with this, um, and Mark can jump in here because we spoke about this earlier today. Uh, a request that you received for vacation of an alley right away. Um, I think Mark has a depiction up that will, will help us all also. Um. It's a sort of a preliminary request to see where we go. I know in addition to the vacation, alley vacation request, there were also some zoning applications, I think, and as well as a building permit request. They might be premature and I, I think they are at this point in time because the depiction of where, and and if you can see it faintly there with the yellow line, um, the way this is orientated to the bottom, that an expansion would go out into what is the purported right-of-way area. Uh, and until that's under control of an applicant, they really shouldn't have an application that's pending before the city council for that. So we'll have to figure that part out. But the bottom line issue becomes what do you do to the, to the, the vacation request? Because it does appear that there are other properties that are served by this area. Mark and I discussed potential of, of realigning it in some way and and shaping where maybe it could work for the expansion but at the same time preserve some form of right-of-way there. That is the issue that that probably will come before the council, I don't know, Mark, to get the update on that. But certainly from a legal perspective, that's the best recommendation here is align it, get the development to work, but also preserve the right-of-way so you have access to other properties there.
So, um, Jeff, I don't know if there's anything, Jeff, Rex, or if there's anything you want to add or?
Mostly I would like to move that road to the north so I can put my building in there and we own a railroad property on the north. And it gets tight in that corner down there. There is a storm drain where you see that dotted line down through center there. I can't get on top of that, but I'd, I'd like to get within fifteen feet of it on that west, west corner. And then I left my setback, but otherwise, if I got to stay inside of that line, then I gotta have a twenty-foot setback. Then there's not really much moving back here to put a building.
So from the perspective of, of Mark and myself, I mean, it's something I think that can be worked out. We'd have to look at it. Maybe looking at underlying title in some, to some regards and and knowing where the location of that that uh, the drainage area is, obviously the, the, is it a, is it a manhole there or is it just the pipe or?
It's a storm drain and
Okay.
And I have the, Rapaz already surveyed that and there's a manhole cover up the, by the street up there and it basically runs straight line back to the trick of the river there.
Okay.
And you can see that daylight's out down there. It's a thirty-inch pipe or whatever under there.
Okay.
And it's fairly deep at the river end. It's probably down thirty feet down there. One hundred feet, I mean, it's way down, but I don't know how deep it is along there. But if we could move that road over twenty feet so that it, at the, you know, right now that line runs on the north side of the road. If, if you move the road over twenty feet, so it's on the south side of the road, then I, then I will.
Yeah, right, right. And and that seems like the most logical way to fix this and make it work. So really before you tonight, as, as council members is telling staff, city attorney and the applicant to figure it out, bring it back to you and get it moving and and do that. So must Mark, you have anything else that's?
No, I think what we need direction on is um, if the council is, is okay with staff working on. I think what would make the most sense right now would be to move that right-of-way over to the west, northwest. Um.
Yeah.
Because right now, actually, that road does, you know, is off of where the actual easement, where the actual right-of-way is, if you look at like in your packet, may show up better. It's hard to see up there, but the actual right-of-way is actually, you know, closer to the, to Jeff's building there. And the actual, over the years, the actual, you know, road that's utilized is actually moved over. So what we'd be doing is probably striding out where the road, where that driveway actually is. Um. Versus where it's plotted right now isn't really where it is. And then we would have to get an easement for the stormwater line. But I think it would make sense for that. And so we just need, I get direction that we can go ahead and kind of start working on that um, with Jeff and Ann.
Would, would the planning commission be involved in the?
They will for the variance.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, he applied for variance, but until we get this right-of-way straightened out, you really can't move on that yet. But yes, this will come in front of the planning commission.
Okay.
Probably in the next six to eight weeks, give or take.
Well, get it moved as quick as we can.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so then in other words, what you want and uh to be arranged is a motion.
A motion's fine. Again, consensus of you three is also probably fine. So I mean, if you tell us to move forward, we know to move forward. That's what we're.
Move, move forward on the
On figuring out the, the right-of-way realignment. I wouldn't call it a vacation at this point in time, realignment and then allowing the applicant to bring forth the, the planning commission applications and building firm application. So yeah, if you want to do a motion of that effect, that'd be best.
For realignment?
Of the right-of-way.
I'm good with that. I don't know if you need a motion. Do you want me to make a motion, Doug?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Molly, if she's making a motion on it, right?
Yes.
I make an emotion, yes, to move ahead on at least figuring it out.
Is there any more uh discussion on that?
Nope.
If not, okay, motion has been made second for realignment on the right-of-way. Uh, and I'll put in this here for Jeff and Ann, that's what the vacated alley road, we'll just add it all in on it. Um, all of those in favor of it? Here we got to go again. Uh, Kim Helgerson.
Aye.
Aye. Um, Molly Ryan?
Aye.
Okay, Doug Henke, aye, so it does pass. Get it rolling for him. Okay. I gather is out there.
That's it.
They go in the
We're good.
Uh, by the way, when do you figure, you know, when would this start coming together?
Well, yeah, yeah, that's what I figured.
Hey, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
My guys are going, are we gonna get this or not?
Okay.
Soon as possible, as soon as possible, yeah. Yeah.
My design guy designed my building, Rob.
Yeah, okay, Rob, you got the news then.
I, you know, I will tell you, Ken, but the facts are, I think the council is going to approve what we get. So you, you can figure that out. Yeah.
I do have to talk to one.
I, I, I understand that. I, I know.
I have a question regarding the held bus that's back there. How many buses are traveling through there each day? Because every time that I've driven by, they're always going in up farther on Houston. Do they still cut through there? They drive out there, okay.
I just, I talked to him, you know, he's okay with it moving over. But I did talk to Matt Mary a little bit. But it, that, that road property mine, so it doesn't really affect them, but I just
Right.
First thing, he's okay.
Okay.
Here we'll have to go, you presented to them or whatever you do there.
Okay.
And on the planning end of it, let's make, you know, as soon as we know, we make a meeting and get it down in the NESC especially.
Yeah, we have to schedule a public hearing. So what do you think we need to have done before we start the variance process?
Well, I haven't seen what, what uh, Rap put together. I mean, that might be enough to say this works or here's how we move it.
Okay.
Say that's there. Um, and then Dave might have to do another description to show that it's twenty feet over or whatever we're trying to do. Once we have that, that can handle this issue and then the planning application, building applications also can flow out of that.
Okay.
As soon as we have that, I think we're probably ready to go and we can move forward and everything else.
I have an existing survey.
Okay.
And I had him plot the building on there to know that I'm over the line by
Right.
My wish by what.
Well, and that could give us a pretty, and and again, it maybe comes that, that, that Dave has to just do another line that's twenty feet over fifteen, whatever we figure it has to be. Um, so we've got the full right-of-way. It's probably as simple as that, but I, I haven't seen what we did the, or maybe you gave it to me. I don't.
Well, it's in, what's in the packet is the existing survey.
Okay, okay.
Um, so what we probably need to do, Jeff, is have um, Dave go out there and do a survey that shows where, kind of where the existing road is now, the existing, you know, what do we call that alley road? And then width-wise, I don't know what a normal alley, Wayne, do you?
What, what's twenty feet?
So if we go twenty feet and then he can just kind of resurvey a new, um, you know, a new survey that shows where that is, then we can take that and we will need that when we send the notices out for the hearing. So that's probably the only step. Once we get that, then
Yeah.
we should be able to move ahead. So if he can get out there, you know, soon, I mean, I assume he could and yeah.
Good.
Yeah, and see how quick you get them. Yeah, and see how quick you get him out there.
Will the uh, the storm drain will align with the new area or it will still?
Right now, the storm drain is on the north side of that alley.
Yep.
And I would like to move the road over so that it's. South side of the alley.
Okay.
Is it an alley? Does the city own that or it's just a?
Well, that. Yeah, that becomes a question of what, you know, if you've got your abstract, you've got title work, that'd be great to look at it that. We we can maybe figure it out without having to do anything, but that's probably the other thing we should see to to make sure. That's there, but it clearly has been used. In some fashion like a public right of way at this point for an alley, so I. Whether it's it shows up on title or it's by use, it it's it's a public right of way to some degree, yeah. Yeah, and that's what I recall from historical there. I know this was looked at and told Mark years ago. I remember something coming up on this. Um, but it never, it never went further beyond that.
So, uh, you know, that it used to go down to the old brush dump. And so my assumption is that was some type of.
Yeah.
You know, right away or whatever. So if if. If Dave could just kind of show a new right of way. Kind of consistent where that road is, that's twenty feet wide. And then show where your building is gonna be and what the setback is. That's what we'll need for that application for the variance. And then we can go with it. And it'll take probably about three to four weeks. Um, you know, we gotta get our hearing set up and we have to provide notice, publish notice and. Notify all the property owners, so that usually takes three to four weeks. So once we get the surveys, those have to go out with the variant stuff that we're, we can get that, you know, scheduled. No. Yeah, no, it's an issue. Okay.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think we're about you and.
Molly, do you have anything to say?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, then that ends, they go land of it. Start with the whole business. This is an update on the finance director, Idris. Um, do you want to bring that up, Mark?
Yep, um, so five candidates were interviewed initially. Second interviews were then held with three candidates. Um, the committee recommended Kelly Perry for appointment for the position. The Camu board met earlier today to appoint her. And she has indicated that she'll, you know, take the job, accept the job. And she plans on starting May fifteenth. That's all I have for that.
Well, I think she's gonna be a good fit from the interviews that we've had with her. And uh, so hope the best on that and get get the win. Okay, then go on then with the review of the quotes for payroll service.
Um, so this really is just. Yeah, it's just basically a continuation of that special meeting. Um. So we had the, we got updated quotes. Um, revised proposals. I won't go through all those, but um, basically. The uh. Upshot of this is all the numbers that we got were. You know, low, pretty much the same as they were before. Even though we talked about having two, basically two organizations, two employer numbers, et cetera. So the numbers we got were in this range of. Uh, six to eight, six to seventy-five hundred range annually. Um, so. I guess the. You know, there there was discussion at the special meeting about. You know, the steps could be the council could just decide to go with one proposal or could wait till the new person starts. I will say this person is. Got a lot of experience in payroll and she's gone through this certified payroll program. I don't know who puts it on, but. Um, so there was also talk, discussion about, you know, wait until she gets on board and then. You know, trying to work with her and. Um, and then make a decision, you know, after she's had some time to look over everything and. You know, we can get an idea of what she's comfortable doing or not doing. I think right now we're, we're doing payroll, you know, we're getting by doing payroll. So, you know, still, but. Um, so that might be a a staff recommendation, I guess, for. What I'm thinking with this is just wait till she starts, but. Anyway. That's what I'll have on that.
Yeah, that's been and and uh. She did report that. Of interest and then working with it. And I think she will give us a lot of information and direction. As to which way to go because the lady has that experience with it. And that, um. So I would say, my opinion is just to let it as is for a future. Day after she gets settled in, um, probably by that time, all of the council members will be here. And I think we can. Go on ahead with direction a little better at that. And we are right now.
Okay. So if that's the case, you don't really need to take any action at this point.
Review and information.
But I just wanna, obviously, it's still an active item, so.
Okay. As I know, that's it for uh, all the business. So we can go on then with. And uh, I don't pay will be on sale liquor license renewable for the VFW. Now I do have a question on that. Does that also cover the Sunday? It does, okay. I'll make that motion to uh. Where we go with uh, VFW license.
Yeah, if you look at the license, it says on sale including Sunday.
Okay.
Even though it's sideways right now, but. There we go. Yeah, it's. When the city issues a liquor license, it's. Got all the components of whatever it is for that holder, you know, for that license holder. In this case, it's gonna be an on sale license and then a Sunday license.
So that's what didn't come up on my screen. That's why I asked.
Yep, yep, so, yeah.
So you've made the motion?
Yes.
You make it? I'll second that.
Any uh, other discussion on? Like, um. Kim Helmsen?
Aye.
Molly Ryan?
Aye.
Doug Henke? Aye. So, passive. A board of appeal and equalization meeting, which is Thursday. April the twentieth at twenty twenty-three, is that at six P M?
Yeah, yep.
There not has to be and just information only on that.
Yep, it's just information, that's correct.
It's been pretty well spelled out. Okay, there's also been an item C, a request for chickens within the city limits. Um, are we gonna have a discussion on that or what are we gonna do?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, it's on the agenda. Um, I guess your options would be. Take no action. Um, or it would be to look further into it. You know, direct staff and city attorney to come up with an ordinance. Um. So.
Well, I'll tell you what, um. This was in February, basically. Uh, there is a mayor's website for. Mayors in Minnesota, and this happened to come up, not through Canyon, but uh, through another uh. City mayor. And anybody can respond to it again. And it was surprisingly how well I kept tabs on what was going on. There was a lot of them. Major share of what responded back was in favor of allowing chickens to be had. Uh, there was a limitation on them. It also had limitations on. On uh. How many? There was also a fee that needed to be paid each year uh, on it for uh, just to place it. It was various different things, so it was kind of interesting to see myself setting on the fence. It's up to the council members as to what they like to do.
I'm kind of on the fence too. I guess I'd like to take time to kind of look through some of the other cities, how they. What they have in there and as far as like the requirements of sizes of the coops and.
This has come up. At least twice before, years back. And each time it was turned down. So, we do have new members on the council now. Um, and I think it's entirely up, I would, I would hold off on it until.
So Mary did say. When she emailed me that she was in favor of, I think, looking into it further.
Molly, what do you have to say?
I, I'm with Kim. I'm on the fence on this one. Uh, I would like to look through the information that the citizen dropped off. Uh, just so that I really feel what I'm making. My opinion, it's an educated opinion, because right now it's, I'm not educated enough to know. What the right answer is.
Okay.
So, basically, we can just uh, table it from time to time.
Okay. Yeah, you don't have to take any action. We can continue it. Or do you think they should take?
So Mark, I have a question, Mark. The the information that she dropped off, is that something that? You can get copies to us or that we can step down and, okay, that'd be great.
I mean, we can just scan it in and email it out to everybody. What I'm gonna do is just put it. Uh, just have Holly put it in the console folder for next month. And we'll just put it back on the agenda. And then these other ordinances will be in there. If there's any others I find, I may try to check around with cities around us to see. How many of them allow it? Um, it's kind of a. It's not the easiest thing to do though, because there's so many cities around us of different sizes and different. You know, it's hard to compare. Cities, you know, like this, but I will probably do some checking.
Yeah, I I have some samples I can get to Mark too if he wants them, but. It it really is hard to compare cities on this type of issue.
Yeah.
It is very unique, each individual city. But certainly if we need ordinances, we have plenty we can rely on and and come up depending on what you want to do. I will say that um, a metro city, city of Mounds, you just had this request and they they had approved it before, a couple of years back. And they had a request to go to a a higher number of allowable animals, birds, whatever. Um, and they approved that. They did, they did allow that, but it was not, it's not a huge number. Um. And, you know, it was interesting because the public works director in Mounds, he also. Uh, he does farm chickens, so he had, they had some experience that they they could look at. And he said, you know, all this stuff is dictated by by uh, you know, group size and everything. There are rules for it. You you should have runs of this size, so. There's not as much as you have to regulate if you go down that path, but it it does create issues for people and setbacks and. Um, that's something you have to be very aware of. There's, you will have that. Typically, it's not roosters, obviously. Um. But there are some communities that allow that as well. So you have to decide that.
Yeah, well, that's exactly pretty much what uh, I was reading in the information I got back on too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So and yeah, the size of the city surprised me.
Oh, yeah.
I figured it would be just smaller communities. I did use a pretty good size out there in the metro area.
Oh, it's it's become a hot issue. Uh, I I won't say it's it's approved everywhere, but they're having some. Natural cities that have approved it.
Yeah.
Not all by any means, but they there's some that have.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Are you happy with it?
Yep.
Okay. Then we'll go on to item B, which is solid waste hauler agreement.
So there is, um. Couple parts to this, um. So, let's get this up here. Um, first of all. Um. One was made, uh. Kyle sent us a letter basically asking for a rate increase. So I wanted to talk about this first. This would go into a new agreement. These rates would go in there, or whatever rates. The council approves. Um, and so he spelled out in here. And I don't know if you want to talk about this, Kyle, or.
Um. I guess that. Basically, a C P I, well, two parts, I guess, the the red ring. Solid waste increase in the rate. So, I worked that out, you know, per resident. Based off of our average, our average. And then the second would be a, the C P I, which was in, you know, D, it was like. Point four percent. You know, the. Inflation or whatever. Last year, for whatever reason, just email requested. It's in our. Our agreement or whatever, that that's. The C P I increased with price index. Uh, built into the contract yearly, and it didn't happen in twenty-one, so this would be for. Twenty-one and twenty-two. And which of course were way higher than we've seen in the past and hopefully in the future. Um. So that's what that all involves.
So the total. Um, of what Kyle's asking for is. Um, there's a comparison. There were talks about the sixty-five gallon, which is the senior citizen. Um, size. Um, and then which would go from seventeen thirty-one to nineteen ninety-nine. And the ninety-five gallon, which is the standard size cart, which will go from twenty-four seventy-eight to twenty-eight fifty. So. What in effect would happen here? So tonight you wouldn't approve the rates. But that's what would go into whatever rates. You tell us to put in the agreement, wh- is what's gonna go in the agreement. And then that's what you're, that's what the council's ultimately going to approve. Probably next month. Um, the current agreement expires at the end of June. So. Um, what my thought is, we have a draft agreement for May. Follow the same, I recommend following the same format as the, you know, the current agreement and just updating the dates and. The amounts and things like that. And so I guess that's about it. But I wanted. Um, Kyle to talk about this and then also about that cleanup day, which we have coming up here. Um, spring cleanup. So I don't know if there's any questions on any of the rates at all.
I don't have any. Makes sense.
Uh, the only question I have read, you know, through on this here again, I didn't get that copy off, so got the computer straightened out here. Second year of our five-year extension, looking forward to many more. We uh. The renewal rates can be done each year, is that correct?
There's a C P I rate in there annually, that's correct.
Yeah, the only real change is. We didn't get it done in twenty-one. Guess my fault for not asking for it or whatever, so it's kind of a catch-up. And then it's like you said, it's built into the contract and then. Hold that that is way smaller going forward, you know. But that's what we did on the. When we did the five-year extension was that was C P I for any year. Like I said, that first year is point four percent. Probably, that doesn't.
This has been probably two years ago, you know, there was, I think it was over in Wisconsin or someplace where. There was a. Glass action suit or lawsuit filed about, um, I think it dealt with interstate commerce and so on. In other words, for garbage haulers, you could have a choice as to where you could dump. Where, under this particular one, um, the Goodview County doesn't have a choice. Is that uh, going any further or?
So, um. So um, it was big or all industrial drives is that they were the main, uh, they were the ones making the, that were suing the county or testing too.
Yeah.
They've been sold out. So I think it's done. And it, well, we've gotten some um, some things back from the court. This is really kind of over my head, but everything that I read is, yeah, go away. We're not changing this. The appeal was denied. They've lost the case. Bring it to Redwood.
We have somebody sitting close to you that may know something. Would you uh, get on the hot seat, please?
He's uh, he's right. It uh, it feels in tail. And uh, you do have to haul everything soon, the red ring. But um, huge frustration that no barn bought this for years and years on and you know, the pollution control agency, PCA, I've been speaking to them, so they're the ones who said, hey, if we're gonna take over your landfill and put that into the full landfill site, you have to do this next step. Frustrating and you know, Redding says, great, yeah, I was doing all this fantastic, but they forgot all about us out here on the outskirts and we're the ones who are gonna maintain the law. Um, what the next, is there any fix to that? I, I haven't seen any yet. Very um, we did get the landfill out way from Biggie County, so it took a huge liability away from my accounting. But uh, they're not throwing us to the cross here on the outskirts of the county. For that, um, I'm actually yeah, waste management, Mouningo. I've been questioning, thinking some of theirs is not going to Redding. So I am starting to do a little more research on that and waste management is being a monster out there. They can't even do it. So uh, we can't get anybody else to put in fits, um, for the Mouningo, I live in Perry Grove and Moscow and this, this stuff with waste management. So what the next step is, I don't know. It's kind of a, I think it depends.
The real frustrating part is they, there's really no ceiling on what they can charge going forward. I mean, they can they cost them more to operate. And it just, it just explode at us here.
And it's frustrating that, and Redding doesn't even burn anymore in their incinerator, the standard to Excel. And then they have to pay Excel to burn the garbage and then they go and sell the electricity comes too. So.
Well, that's kind of what I understood to be. So in other words, if you're in the garbage hauling business in Goodyear County, you kind of wind up being the bad guy. Is that about it? You know, raising the rates, you have no choice.
Well, right. Yeah, on that end of it, yeah. Yeah, they called their neighbor anywhere else. Oh my God, what are you saying?
Yeah.
And then uh, there's actually I think eight or nine registered haulers in Biggie County. And when I saw the public works, they said, we have planned haulers in Biggie County. I said, no we don't. They think that's when you are interested too, but out here, we only have one or two.
Interesting.
So basically, I just need a consensus that we're gonna move ahead with this renewal. And basically that the rates, those are the rates we'll plug in there and I don't know if there's any questions on anything else on anything to do with that. Obviously, it's not gonna be finalized till, you know, next month or when it's adopted. So there'll be more time to discuss it, but Scott, do you want to update that?
Yeah, no, we've done that before. I think we can. I mean, I'm assuming we're talking about the same structure with the the three and two we did before and keeping all those types of provisions in play. So no, it won't be that much to uh, to we can, so we can bring it back in May.
Okay, perfect.
So we need to do a motion then just to say, to go ahead and update the contract with these.
Well, I don't think we need a motion per se because we're just gonna bring it back for approval.
Okay.
As long as you three are okay with that, we're.
I'm good.
Yep.
Okay.
We don't have to have a motion. Just, okay, yeah, I, I Oh, you agree, right?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, myself, yes. So we'll go with it as is and uh, update it for the month of May. Any more questions on that? Do you have any uh, out there?
Well, I think we'll get to, get to something later with the cleanup. If there's more discussionable, I don't have anything left of that.
Then we go on with item B, which is the resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six. Did he support a, was it SF?
Um, it's support of an appropriation for the establishment of a transportation management organization that would basically cover southeastern Minnesota. Um, the organization would coordinate transportation with companies or organizations like um, High Ruffeland, um, and they're in support of this. That would be the transportation company that covers Canyon, Wamango and a lot of this area. Um, and so they're, they're trying to get a appropriation from the state to, it might be to do a study that would look at what it would take to establish a transportation management organization. Um, this was advocated by the Southeast League of Minnesota, Southeast League of Municipalities. And so the membership of that, which is most cities in southeastern Minnesota, is also been asked to, you know, pass this resolution for the um, senate, the state senate.
Hey, this is what Carter was talking about.
She was talking about like a tour coming here. I don't know if she was talking about this per se. But this is something that High Ruffeland Transit is involved. You know, they're advocating, I'm on their, like they have a transportation advisory group, I'm on that group. So, yeah.
So then, um, is there any more discussion on it that uh, pretty well spells out what they're looking at?
It's really a no, there's really no downside to supporting it, I don't think.
And it also looks like um, pretty much everybody's on board with it so far.
So you need a motion. I could make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six, city support for SF three zero eight seven.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? If not, we will go on then for a resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six. Support, city support of SS three oh eight seven. Kim?
Aye.
Aye. Molly Ryan?
Aye.
Doug Hentke? Aye. So the motion does pass. Okay. Hold on to item F, another resolution, twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, supportive HF twelve eighty-five to remove the income restrictions for TIF and non-metropolitan counties of Minnesota. Uh, who wants to take that on at this convenience? There is mine.
Yep, it's a no-brainer. Um, basically, this resolution is asking for support for a bill that would remove the income restrictions for TIF assistance for housing projects in greater Minnesota outside the seven county metro. So basically, right now there's income restrictions if TIF is used. So that will include us if a developer wants to come in and build rental. And what they're asking, this bill will change it so there won't be income restrictions anymore. If cities want to help housing projects, and these are gonna be like multifamily housing projects. Um, uh, the Sunset Homes Assisted Living Project was uh, back, you know, twenty years ago, the city uh, did a tax increment district to help that out. Um, so the city's done this before. Um, but I think it's a good, it's a good bill. I mean, I think those income restrictions really hamstring a lot of projects where they can. I've been involved with this on the other side of, as an HRA director, you know, a while ago, but these things have been around for years, the income restrictions and it's, I don't know. I think it would be great if they could remove them, so. And that's what this resolution does. It just supports that bill that would do that.
I'll make a motion then to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, support for the HF twelve eighty-five.
I'll second it.
That's their own income limits. I'm questioning that. What does it mean by that?
Income, well, income limits right now are based probably on HUD. Low, moderate income, which are based, HUD does, or the federal government does income um, limits, low income, moderate income for every county in the United States, I suppose, every metro area. So I assume it's, it's based on those limits, which I think like if we have a developer come here, and this could happen, and they're asking for TIF, I mean, we've got developers looking at the Sunset Home. Um, we've got other developers come look at other areas. Since, you know, even in the last five years, there's probably been two or three that have come in here, not including the Sunset Home property. And they're looking at it for multifamily. And one of the problems is the, I think the income limits don't help them because then people who make above a certain amount and the moderate income limits are, I mean, they're not low, low, but they're prime middle income, but they restrict then who can live there. Where if those are taken away, they can be open to, you know, market, like anybody can move in there. And that's kind of what we would need. If we have housing, you know, if you take out senior housing out of the picture. But senior housing could be the same way too, actually. If they're used for senior housing, there's gonna be income limits. And that almost could be harder to get people into them then, because seniors a lot of times have, you know, with assets and income and everything, maybe are gonna be higher than a middle income family that's moving into town. You know, that gets a job in the area or whatever. So I think for any kind of rental housing, those income limits are, can be a real um, restriction where a developer says, yeah, we're not gonna do it because we can only get people up to this income level. And in Canyon, with our rental market and just our whole market so tight anyway, because we're so small, it, it even, I think it hurts us even more than a bigger city, bigger community. So.
Uh, well, how is um, Furbel doing? There's four new units that have come in there in the last two years, three years, and they're steadily building and that's quite some size now.
They probably didn't do TIF at no.
No, no, because I did all four of them, but um, they um, yeah, they, they, they had tax credits that do have different types of limitations, but there's a different flexibility there. What Mark is talking about in this bill, it would allow more flexibility for your staff to work with people and say, how do we get you in there? How do we get the better mix of people that can actually afford to come into the community? The, the ones in Furbel, yes, there are some income restrictions. One of them's more severely restricted than the others. Uh, but a couple of those are market rate. They were market rate situations where um, some assistance was provided, but not that much. Uh, at the end of the day, because they had such a housing shortage there as you have here. But that's the issue. Multifamily is what's being built. This um, this bill allows more flexibility to allow to work better in smaller communities like Canyon, like West Concord. Pick any of them around here, Wamango. Uh, you'd have more flexibility under a statutory change than has, that is now available. Anybody that would come to try to develop would work with Mark and they'd have a lot easier time of making something work as well as the city being able to provide assistance to make that project work if there was need for that assistance. So Mark started out and said, this is probably a no-brainer. I, I would say too, I, I think that the bill would make a lot more sense for outstate Minnesota because you shouldn't have the same type of restrictions you have in metro area. It would be way different in this area than if you compare to what's going on at Hopkins or Mollinger or Woodbury. You're, you're just way different. That's just the reality. And this would allow more flexibility outside the metro area. So I would say, yeah, I would tell you to support.
Can I ask one more question from your commissioner? What's your opinion? Motion have been made. Second, has been a discussion on resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, supportive HF twelve eighty-five. Those in favor of the motion, Kim Helgason?
Aye.
Molly Ryan?
Aye.
And Doug Hentke? Aye. So it will pass. Okay, item G, which is fire relief gambling application for a Canyon Country Club, which will be resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, approved of the application of lawful gambling from Canyon Pope. Fireman's Relief Association. Not when there is altogether, you just headline the difference at all.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Motion been made, second for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, which is approval on the application for lawful gambling, Canyon Fireman's Relief Association. Uh, Kim Helgason?
Aye.
Molly Ryan?
Aye.
Doug Hentke? Aye. So it passes. Okay, then there's item H. Schedule, solid waste, bring cleanup day. Mark, and then do you want to take over that?
Yeah, I guess so. Um, so the park board at their last meeting discussed um, holding or, you know, asking the council to look into holding a spring cleanup day. Um, I talked to Kyle about, you know, looking at how they might approach something like this. And he did tell me that he thought the best way for them to do it would be the option where it's down at like Depot Park and people bring them stuff, um, having it in a centralized location. I believe that's how it was done the last couple of times the city did it. It's been a few years since the city did uh, spring cleanup. So he's here now, so I don't know if he's got any more thoughts on that. Um.
Well, yeah, I guess it'd be nice to get your ideas of what you think would work, what they've done in the past. So as an example, Danison, they will do one every spring, will sit there for two or three hours. Um, blowing up more or less faulty items, uh, stuff that they can't or don't put into their normal weekly pickup. Um, we uh, basically charge them the landfill fee. Um, probably a little bit, and I think I have to charge over a truck and just one. Just gotta take anything anybody brings in for a couple of hours. They have a Just gotta take anything anybody brings in for a couple hours. They have a. A group that helps. I think it happens to be that they're council people, you know, but they're. They're there, don't funnel with, wagging or whatever they have. And. That's it. Mark had mentioned. That we would do a fee-based thing where I would. Look at, you know, the charge for everything that comes in, and. Not really excited about doing it that way, but. I I don't know.
Yeah, and that's totally the call of the waste taller, you know, because. If you have fees to get rid of stuff. Then, I mean. Uh, we, my assumption was that somebody had to pay that.
Yeah.
So.
Um. So here again, we're kind of in a. Itty spot with. You know. Where these Romney, um. I mean, if you, I just happen to have their waste campus through a shirt. And we would. It was in Rice County, under Strand or Madison. They, anything that come would go in there with exception, scrap metal appliances. Mattresses, but. You know, furniture and uh. Kinda any big stuff can just be crunched in and taken to the landfill. Well. Here's their list of sorting. Cardboard, burnable, shreddable waste, scrap metal, non-burnable, shreddable waste, plastic destruction debris, wood, painted stain, clean. Furniture. Tires. Concrete, they don't want, no furniture, no mattress, no bathroom, no like, no. So. To haul that, I think I would have a bunch. Like eleven trucks sitting here. To follow their rules and. It's really hard for me to come up with a great idea of how to do this. I don't know what to tell you. I would love to hear your ideas and see if we can work through it. I mean, just. If it's something you think is. That you want to do as a community, let's find a way to do it. Um. What I've seen is. They might, there might be people that decided they wanna do it because. That place and that place and that one, well, they don't show up to it anymore. So. It's not, if that's what your idea is of cleaning up your neighbors, it probably doesn't work. Any ideas or thoughts and questions? You can add to that. That's me, or is it? Want to go?
That's red. I did put a phone call in the Farmington. To see how they would work in that. And I didn't give them a response that on that. They think Kansas is a threat cold.
Yep. See, my whole thing is thinking that. I like the idea of a central location, but there is so many people that aren't gonna make an effort. To load their stuff and drive it there. Where if they're able to take it out of their house and just throw it right on the curb. You come around, pick it up. Could it be something that is done? Like one week? Say the month of May, the first week in May, you're gonna do quadrant one of the city, then quadrant two the next week, you know, break it up into the four. Four areas. And. We've always gone up to Farmington or whatever, and to be honest, we would pull stuff because people are throwing out perfectly good. Items, we'd bring it home and have a garage sale and sell it. It's just that they don't, you know, your. Your fake ficus trees, they're a little dusty. They don't wanna dust them off. They throw them out. I mean. It's some of that stuff, so. More so where you, they're gonna put it out on the curb and then the community can go around, and if there's something that. You don't want, maybe somebody else couldn't utilize it and, you know, repurpose it somehow. But. Yeah, it's it's the cost issue. It's the the restrictions of what they're gonna take and, you know, they had it marked as like. Only two TVs per house sold, um, but maybe that's something we would just say no electronics. Um, carpet, it had to be cut in six-foot sections, totally rolled. I mean, they they had all these different parameters too that they, they would do no tires. They did a one special Saturday just for tires. But I just, I think that there's, there's not gonna be people that are gonna load it in their car and drive it. Drive it down there and pay to get rid of it. They're gonna let it sit in their yard or. For everybody to to look at. I don't know.
We had a couple of dumpsters, like if there was a few waste dumpsters, that could go to L D, right, because.
I think I, yeah, I think a lot of like appliances and that kind of stuff, we we got that down there.
It's like my thought, if we could have. We'd have to have a list though. We can't have mattress or.
Mm-hmm.
Not a lot, I think, if we're gonna be out.
I talked to Kirkiner this week who on that, and he's. Um. He said it'd be a twenty-five dollar charge on a mattress. And there's kind of a need at Salvation Army at this moment. Some could be used, others. At that price, you can get recycled. Um, so we got number for that. Um. Yeah, so. Obviously tires and all. But I'm, yes. Usually what you see, you're gonna see a lot of old furniture, kids' toys. Dressers, you know, the screen doors they put together. And so much of that cannot be delivered to hell there, so. What do I do? You know what I want to do, but but. I can't say that.
We have talked about this at the. I think we are looking at a township aid at the demolition. Because the townships have so much garbage individuals. You know, so sometime here, you know, in the next month or so. Um, and nothing was decided on, so I don't know. Are you gonna give public works the call and maybe see what type of options they would be looking to look at at that point?
Oh, Willie?
Yep.
Okay.
Just saying, you know, there hasn't talked, there was really no final, because I guess Florence Township right outside of Redling, there's two roads there that are just. Full of birds.
Hmm.
They love and just throw out a bit. I was at um, Oscar Township, and we had a, we have a vein, you know, down the southeast corner of our Oscar Township. For some reason, instead of just setting it off on the road, so it can be picked up, it is one of them, you know, so. You know, it's really a frustration all around the county, you know, and I don't know.
Yeah.
So the other question that. Maybe you can ask if you thought that, Willie, would be. What's it is faulty items even considered M S W, and maybe it doesn't fall under these same restrictions that your weekly waste does. You know, because. They really can't handle, you know, they're just going to a different land. That is the idea.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't special. Putting in the city, you know, I mean.
Well, the thing is, okay, if we're gonna do something in May. You know, and it's now, I, April eleventh, we're gonna have to get kind of rolling on it a little bit. So. It's not that it couldn't be done at a different time either, but if we're gonna do something in May, we're gonna have to kind of figure out a direction here of what. What the council would wanna do with that.
The colony hasn't been wasted.
It's Tuesday, that's on a Tuesday.
Too full and busy down there. How people can do use that day. They kind of got set up towards a drive-through. So the space would be really limited.
Yeah. We talked about that at the park board, yeah. But it's on Tuesday, so that's not really, it doesn't lend itself to this kind of thing.
That was benign. I'd like to see something done, but I don't have an answer. It could be. Stuff to council.
I mean, if. If you guys set up, like the last one of these that was done, I think was waste management. When they were here. And. Either that or Gibson, I can't recall which one of the two did it, but they had, they had roll, like a truck. And then they had roll-offs down at the park. They must have had separation, but I don't know what that was for the roll-offs. But I don't know how many people would bring it down there. I mean, I know. Kind of Kim's idea of going around. Picking stuff up, but part of that then is having a group of people or some people that could help. People bringing out their house and stuff, and that's where it becomes. Kind of difficult for us, you know, if there was a. Community group like Alliance Group or something that could help with that, that'd be one thing, but. You know, city staff, public works is that they're not gonna do something like that.
What about the Boy Scouts?
Eh. Well, you're talking about moving some heavy stuff, man, so I don't know.
Well, that would be it. It would just be, we'd have to have the restrictions on there as far as for what they would. Help with, you know, small.
Yeah, then you kind of. You lose the. Momentum of, you know, like if somebody says I have a freezer or fridge needs to be moved. You know. There's gonna have to be some adults that do that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, you could just tell people it's their responsibility to get it out to the curb, and most people will get it out there.
Yeah.
But there will be some people that will not be able to. And so then they're gonna ask, well, is there anybody that can help us? That's always our discussion to have with the, you know, with us, because if we don't know anybody, it's. I don't know, that kind of creates a.
I'll just transition. I think you're kind of the head of this, what you suggest. Sorry, I have to put you not, but uh. I don't.
Right. I guess I'll go with what I'm familiar with, and that would be. You you can have a. Old, probably a dumpster for. Appliances, you know, we have to come up with a. Acceptable items like scrap iron appliances. In one dumpster. And then basically faulty items. You know, anything that can't go into your normal container. Um. And I don't know when the, when the counties come for their pass, you know, are they doing new waste or, so I don't know, but it's usually. I don't think. Did this is candy, yeah, chemicals and all sorts of course, that would be.
Paint, split, oil, fluorescent bulbs, you know, all all lighter stuff in in containers, that much I do know.
Okay.
They don't keep bulbs in. And that's for you.
So. So that's what, it's like bring one packer or a real packer that. You can throw a desk or a couch and. Bring it in there and throw it. Um. I guess that's probably what I'd recommend, but I'd probably get a list of this. Later this week and. Based, kind of based off of this and what we won't be able to take, I guess, probably more, more so than what the county. Um. And.
With this being a roll-off?
Well, we probably put. Say if there'd be, you know, appliances and stuff, we'd probably go and scrap iron, whatever it was. The door roll up. And then that any faulty or stuff that go in a pack, I guess. But I also. Would probably. Not wanna charge each individual, or I guess if that's what we gotta do, we'll do that.
Well, if you don't charge them, then, I mean, are you just gonna pay for it? Because, I mean, the city.
There's, it's not budget.
Yeah. No, and the problem is this, if you may get thirty, forty percent of the people coming from outside the city. You know, especially if it's a central drop-off now. I mean, if I've never had it where it was set up that only city residents could do it. So I don't know if that would be a rule, but I've never, the ones that I've been involved with that are in a centralized location. I don't believe there's ever been a rule that people outside the city couldn't use it. So then. So that's where I get concerned about us paying for it, but even residents I do, yes. Because I think we're gonna set a precedent that. We don't want to, you know.
Well, this is Molly, and I can't hear a lot of that, which which is fine, but I mean, I know there's one going on. Over in Mazepa or Wabashaw County here in the next couple of weeks, and residents absolutely have to pay for the things that they drop off. So they're set fees, so if it's. I don't even know, I could get the details from. The the sheet, but if it's a certain item, it's, you know, twenty dollars if it's, you know, so they. Have to pay for the things, and I don't know how that correlates to what it costs to get rid of it, but it's not a free service. And again, I could get the details. My mom has a sheet. I could get the details if it would help.
It would help.
Okay, I can get this. I can get it to Mark, and then he can get it to you.
Yeah. Okay. That can be. We can make it work. Um.
But that is, sorry to break in, that is one. Place in Mazepa that you bring the items to. That is not picking up at every curb, because then that. With the whole paying, I don't know how you would do that. That could be a nightmare. I don't know. So this is one location that you bring your items and drop them there, and I know that they've had good success. They do it every year.
Right.
So timing-wise. This would be the. The week of the thirteenth, or like Saturday the thirteenth or the twentieth. Um, if we're gonna do it in May. Now, my other question is, does it? You know, we're trying to kind of coordinate with spring. But, I mean, does it have to be, my concern too is just. We don't have a lot of detail of this put together. And so then we're just gonna kind of run with a bunch of. Ideas, but. Would it make more sense to do it so we've got more time to plan? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there like later.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it has to be in May, and I know there's this kind of concept of. Cleanup, but actually I think that's almost like April more than May. I think by the time we get into May. It almost becomes more summer-like and people have kind of cleaned things up. You know. So.
And it'll give people more time to plan what they want to.
We're gonna, we're gonna use depot as the site. You're gonna wanna do it before the pool, I guess, traffic, it's too much.
Uh.
Moves the space.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You're gonna do it this year, you gotta do it before June.
It's gonna be tough.
Commissioner, you had a.
Very, you know, organizations who wanted this back as a company. But all like the rest of the district was willing to do something, and, you know, if they got enough to add together with the trailers, they could maybe drive through town and say. If they had that list that put the demolition landfill. And people had all this stuff, and they say, okay, this is what is gonna cross there, but we also need a donation to the rest of them. That. We, it would take a lot of headache stuff to. Follow it here, but.
Well, they probably are just gonna end up bringing them back to the. Wherever the central location is. Now, is there any place besides Depot Park? Like.
Depot, West Park or something.
That's what I was picturing was West Park, I. Wasn't sure, but. Someplace like that. Could that work? But I think like the last one of these I did in Pine Island, I think. They went around, like the Lions went around and helped people, but the. Upshot was it, it was held in a central location. So the collection that happened was for people that called in to whoever was coordinating that. And then they went to the house and picked up stuff, but people still brought stuff. No, you know what? They did go around. Now they say that, forget it, if I'm not right. But I know here the last time it was definitely was at Depot Park. So. But, you know, there could be pickup. It could still be in a centralized location. There could be some kind of pickup if people called. And said they wanna get on a list or whatever, then that group would get the list and they could go around and. You know, there could be something like that too. It's just hard to know. We don't have a lot of time to plan this thing. That's the problem right now. It's the eleventh and. We're talking five to six weeks out, we gotta publicize it. And we haven't even determined the rates, what's gonna be picked, you know, that's my.
If it would be a Saturday, could we maybe reach out to Bullcraft and see if we could have just a small? Section of their parking lot there?
Try that too.
Out there.
I'm just really.
Go ahead.
Ends up, you know. Moves not really even organized, but somebody's gonna show up with a trailer and. Off car or something, and they're going around helping the neighbors, it's kind of a neat community thing, you should. If anywhere, any of them that I've been involved, that's. Yeah, I mean, I'm not. Scary, so. So. Well, work with whatever you kind of decide you wanna do, I guess.
Yeah, my biggest thing now, concern now is time, there's gonna be timing of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Cause we wanna do it right, and I don't wanna rush into something.
We wanna get enough notice. I'll get you the information tomorrow, I'm going over to Mazepa anyway, so I'll grab whatever they have and I'll get it to you, so you can get it to. Him, so you can at least look at what they're doing.
Yeah, and I, we can bring this back next month, um. We can get more information put together on costs and things like that.
Well, what would happen, I'm, I'm just throwing this out, Kyle, you bring in. Four dumpsters, we'll just use that figure, one for heavy metal. Appliances, you know, TVs, stuff like that there, uh, whatever else you might think and something. A central location, you drop them, you're there. Whoever wants to come in, uh, a fee of some sort, five dollars, ten dollars, whatever it is, if he makes enough money to cover his finances. What about, um, city? At least making up the rest of the difference on the cost. For this year, so we get it going, do something. Right or wrong, and have it so we can get it into the utility bills and so forth, to go out in May. As to what is happening in twenty of August.
So then you'd schedule it like in June or July or something?
No, I was still hoping for, uh.
For me.
At least May the twentieth.
Okay.
How long of a period of the day? That you think, well, here we're going back to you again, you know, I mean, make a reasonable hours or something like that.
You know, eight to nine to one.
When the dumpster is full, that's it, I'm sorry.
So another question, Kyle, is you would have to. Have it set up so that in case you need more, you gotta bring more roll-offs? I mean, is that something you guys will be able to do? Because if you bring. Three or four out there and they get filled up and there's other people with.
If you're advertising a time that you're gonna be there and then it's full when they get there.
Yeah.
How do you tell them, sorry?
Yeah, that's gonna be pretty dicey.
Yeah, we have to.
So.
Have time.
Have to accommodate you on that.
That's another thing is you, I mean, there's. You can't just have a flexible or a finite number of. Roll-offs, and, and we don't have any idea how many people are gonna come, obviously, but. That's another part of this too, is you gotta be able to bring more. Roll-offs or trucks if they're needed.
Yeah. It, there's a lot of what-ifs, um. Well, I guess. Put the list of things that are not acceptable to others. And that, I mean, it's usually the stuff that, the hard stuff people try to get rid of that can't take any. You know? Um. That eliminate. A lot of stuff, you know, it's just gonna end up being just kind of. You know, clean out garage, basebooks and things. Likely, so. Let me get that list together. I think I should be able to do that this week. And, um. Yeah, I'm thinking one, one packer and, and.
Yeah, you, that may not be enough, I don't know. I mean, are you gonna?
You know, it very.
Well, so now I'm talking about a town the size with, uh. You know. Two hundred people. Uh, instead of. That many other people, so. I guess you can just move. But we'll. Like Dennis, and they do it all, you know, every year. So that's a, that's a full load of the truck, almost always, and then. Why did the scrap iron? We will have a problem if we need more trucks, because. I don't wanna place the dump, so. I don't know how that.
How about, well, I mean, how many roll-offs do you think you could?
With this much. Notice, I mean, I would have to be turning away work, you know, to make sure that I have enough, and I mean, I, we almost gotta say. Need this many or. You know. I mean, we get people calling in and. You know, all week, and one, one for the weekend, and. If I tell them don't. Then I don't use the gear, so I, I mean, hey, this is crazy. This stuff we just listed, you know, starts at noon and goes till we're full.
I don't know, cause I think you're gonna have people show up there, and if they have their cars full of stuff. And they get turned away, that's not gonna be pretty. We're gonna be hearing about it, they're gonna be hearing about it.
Right.
And yeah, what if people, right, people leave stuff?
Yeah.
That's, see, that's my whole thing is. If we don't have this planned out right. You know, these guys are gonna hear about it, we're gonna hear about it, and it's not gonna be good.
Like, I would say probably don't want more than. Three. Four hours of, I'm going. You know, they're not covered in that time period, there's a.
Ten to two, so it's morning and afternoon kind of.
And then what happens if people come from outside town, you know? There's no way to tell how many people are, you know, that's the whole problem with this, there's just no way to tell.
Kind of been implied always that it's residents.
Right.
Every other place that I've been. And, yeah, how is that least? Yeah, I mean, just.
Somebody's gonna have to check.
Yeah, the metro drop-offs for Hennepin and Carver both require you to show a license when you show up.
This address. You charge your pretty five bucks regardless of.
And they might do that in Mazepa too, I don't know, I'm sure that'll stay on the thing.
That's probably not with the.
As far as not having enough roll-offs, if you're full, could you? Tag team with another carrier, like, do you have any, a good relationship with another? One that if they could be on call or something, or? I don't know.
Based on what I've seen before at BBA, you get participation, but probably. I'll just, I can just gather enough, they have fun and that. Keep rolling if we need to, and yes. But I, I think we need to, need to limit that time just so it doesn't turn into a. Free-for-all, you know? I don't anticipate that would. I mean, that most people have room to throw stuff on a weekly basis, you know?
Yeah. You would think so, it's just, another thing is, this hasn't been done here for a while.
Yeah.
So there may be a big surge this year. I mean, there's no talent, you know?
Or maybe.
Or maybe it might be kind of dead.
About it next year.
Yeah.
It's a, there's a lot of very. What are you doing? Yes, try it.
I think if we do, you just gotta plan for what you can plan for, try it this year, learn your lessons from this year, if we're gonna do it on a yearly basis and go from there. I think we can talk, you know, I mean, I think you just need to make a decision what you're gonna do. Go with it.
You wanna plan for the twentieth? I'll get a list that I'll plan to have. Truck or two and some boxes that then. We'll charge accordingly. Try and get that on the list and. Year from so many hours and it's done, you're done, and then.
I think, I think that sounds reasonable.
Well, publicize the best we can, did the newsletter go out yet? Okay. Does it go out this week? Okay. We're gonna have to, we'll have to bump something out of there and put this in there for sure. So we'll have to know, we're gonna have to have some, some, so. I mean, we don't even have to put the rates in there, we can just put them on the website, refer to whatever, but. We're gonna have to put something in there.
You want something in the newsletter to say that there are going to be charges, but then the specific, unless somewhere else.
And then the other part of this is, another part is gonna be, is it gonna be open to anybody, or is it just gonna be open to city residents?
City residents. City resident.
Okay.
Try and make it city and.
Yes.
Okay.
I like to show your idea, I like Scott's idea of you have to show your, show a valid driver's license.
So you'll have somebody that's, yeah, I gotta make paper under controls and check driver's license, collect cash and all that.
No, I guess we'll have to have somebody out there, you know? I don't know how, or I mean, I, I'm sure there's a way we can do it, but we'll have to figure that out. Um, let's see, you know, if we get somebody out there, if it's three or four hours, I mean, it shouldn't be. You know, a huge deal, I guess we're, we might have to pay, we're gonna have to pay somebody to sit out there, but.
Well, in the meantime, you know, looking at something, I feel that, you know, all the questions done and answered. Have you? I don't, Mark, I'm one city council member, I know this has been something that. Uh, Kim has worked on for a long time, maybe the three get together. Iron out whatever it is in the next few days or so. Uh, you know, as to hours, all in the location, detail it out. And see what happens for this year, and then we can work on it, um. Into the future, see how it goes. That acceptable? Or?
Yeah, I mean, I would. I would ask that the council. Have a motion, pass a motion, you know, and schedule it. Um. I mean, time-wise, Kyle, I don't know, what do you think would be? From your, logistically, from you getting stuff over there and.
Well, I'd probably prefer to go earlier end of the day, but if you wanna start at. Nine, that's fine, nine to.
Nine to noon, okay, nine to noon, does that sound good, May twentieth?
That's fair.
Okay, that's what we got down, May the twentieth.
And we'll have a list. We'll work with Kyle, I mean, we'll have to get it. You know, hammered out by next week. Um, and I'll call Willie. Talk to him at Cudhu County Public Works. And we'll see, cause if you can take. You know, large stuff to other landfills, that'll make a difference, or other. Other landfills. Um. And I think you might be onto something that it's more MSW that they're.
Right.
Controlling with, uh.
Right.
Could you kind of sell the waste ordinance and not larger items?
Yeah.
There.
When you say you're gonna get together, are we gonna have a council member on this?
Yeah, I guess what I would tell you is I'll, I, can I just connect by email?
Sure.
Cause I think we've got the date, the time, and the other part will be what's gonna be accepted.
Yep.
What the fees will be.
Will be, yeah.
And I could email. Everybody that, just as well as.
Yeah.
Kim, and then we'll need someone, we are gonna have to probably have a. Employee sit out there and I'll have to try to figure out, I've got one idea now, but we'll probably have to just pay him. Overtime or whatever, have somebody sit out there.
Molly, are you, um. Have anything to say on this?
No, I think we're good, sounds like a good plan.
Well, then, um, we're gonna get on here with a motion.
Do we need a motion?
There was a. Park board that's trying to come up with it, do they have, oh, here's that could maybe be involved with it potentially? Or are they had just the? Board?
Well, they're just an advice, I mean, they're an advisory board, they do a lot of things.
Yeah.
Lot of events, but. I don't know. I'm assuming we'd have an employee, try to find an employee to do it.
I'm gonna be out of town that weekend, so I can't. Can't then, and then. I mean.
Yeah.
Bailey and Ted, I don't know if they will, but. Okay. Okay, could check with them. Yep. I will check with them, see if they could. Do you want?
I made a motion. Motion on that? What we've kind of discussed is, um, May the twentieth? Will be the day, location is not made up yet, is that correct, or is it gonna be up to the people?
Yeah.
Working on it, you say? Okay.
Yeah, the pool parking lot, that way we don't have to worry, like, if there's an event, if somebody's got the Depot Park rented. Um, that day. I don't know if that would be a problem if it's at the pool.
That wedding that we approved, where, is that, that, that day?
Okay.
But it probably isn't in the morning.
I don't remember what time it was.
We do it nine to noon.
Yeah, as long as there isn't junk left there.
She doesn't have a date on there.
So. We'll go West Park.
It's May twentieth. It's the twentieth, but there's no time.
Yeah.
Well, I don't care, I mean, I don't have a feel for.
I'm just nervous, but. Four hours after it pulls off.
Well, if it's at, like, a place like West Park. If stuff gets left there, I mean, that's not good, but it's not like gonna be blocking a road or a. That's would be my concern with the shop. Having it up there. I mean, we can determine a location, we can come up with, figure something out. So we don't have to know that exact thing tonight, but. Um.
I, I like the pool idea, not because of the weather, but. Because people, it's visible, people say.
Better traffic flow.
Yeah, it's at the shop, nobody holds it. And, and out here is made from like islands, I think, yeah, could end up in there.
I suppose, yeah.
Well, if you did it. That end of the parking lot, you know?
Yeah.
Right by the depot. If they're down there decorating for the wedding, maybe it'll be, all right. I don't know if you could. Get that much.
You want it?
Can we work on those details, like, through that email, make, make some options, were you talking about Full Craft two potentially, Kim, or was that not for a spot? Well, that, yeah, that was if the pool's open, but yeah, I don't know why we couldn't reach out to them to see too.
Oh, interesting. I wonder. I like that better than Full Craft also.
Okay.
You know, maybe if it's gonna mess with the park, I hate to, um, they rented it, you know, period, and then. Maybe this time do enough at the public works, maybe.
Well. Well, we can try to come up with a location after the, you know. We'll, we'll check out this.
What about the new building site out there?
The industrial.
Roads, yeah, how many roads are? Would there be any spot there? Is it your site there?
What's always done?
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Can't turn around and.
God, that might be a good idea, oh, we've done our junk out here. So far it's been nicely cleaned. Okay, while you guys determine what, uh, locations and all of the rest of the details will be. Gotten in the next few days here, hopefully, so. We need the motion, I don't think anybody has, and I'm recalling them. Do you have, uh? Spring cleanup day on the May the twentieth and approximately, are we talking nine to twelve, is that what we're looking for hours?
I think so.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, spring cleanup, May twentieth, roughly nine to twelve with other details to come.
Residents only?
Residents only.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? I hope not. Uh, Kim Hoggison.
Aye.
Aye. Molly Ryan.
Aye.
Aye, Doug NPI, so the motion passes. We have that out of the way. Other business? Schedule of upcoming meetings, KMU meeting will be Tuesday, April the eighteenth at four P M. Board of Appeal and Equalization, which is Thursday, the twentieth, and that's at five P M. Members. Interesting to, uh, add in, if you have a good word. E D A meeting will be Tuesday, April the twenty fifth at eight A M. City Council meeting will be Tuesday, May the ninth at seven P M. Okay? We'll go to council and general staff comments. And we can start with, uh, you, Mark.
Um, I just wanna again thank Wayne and Randy for all the work they did and the crew. Of Public Works and KMU. Um. Assisting with that sewer main break. Last weekend, they did a excellent job. I think it went pretty seamless and. So appreciate all you, what you guys did.
How about you there, city attorneys?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, there's a lot of good things, but, uh, that have gone on. Probably missed some of the better ones, so I'm just gonna say I don't have any comments either, so, uh, Kim, how about you?
Well, just the same thing to thank Wayne for the call on. Letting us all know, so that way if we had any concerned citizens calling us to question what was going on, appreciate the heads up.
Molly, wherever you're at.
I will ditto what they said, uh, thank you for the call and good work on all of that.
Thank you. And then we have the side lady over there in the corner, you have any comments tonight? Oh, okay. Well, we've got that covered. Now we needed the most important in German.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. And I will second.
Okay. First been made, second to adjourn the meeting of city council meeting, April eleventh of twenty twenty-three. All of those in favor, well, let's put it this way. Kim Hoggison.
Aye.
Aye, Molly Ryan.
Aye.
Aye, Doug NPI, so. Meeting has been adjourned.
Thanks, guys, see ya.
Thank you.